Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February 3, 2015. My name is Scott Bugby. To my right is Jim Leehan. Join us later on this evening will be Jeff Palumbo. To Jeff's left is Jack Hathaway, Town Administrator.
Jeff.
And to Jack's left is Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant. Jack, would you do me a favor and read the agenda?
I would be happy to. The meeting for the Board of Selectmen for February 3, 2015, beginning at 6:30 PM. First order of business, we have Mr. James Gershia here, who is interested in volunteering for the town. At 7:00 PM, we have the Water Rate Hearing with DPW Director McGee for the FY '16 budget period. We're going to have a discussion on Lake Street. We also need to, late agenda item, we need to vote to deficit spend the snow and ice budget. Congratulations.
All righty.
Town Ministerial Report, including opening the warrant for the annual town meeting. Please consider the Norfolk Dunkin' Donuts/Lions Road Race for Sunday, April 26. We have a brief discussion of the boilerplate articles of the draft warrant. And then we have executive, acceptance of minutes, and then an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or contract negotiation. So that is our agenda for tonight.
Well, great. Thank you. Jim, would you like to join us up here?
Sure.
Thank you. You can sit wherever in my, it's not for, it's for the folks at home. Hopefully your wife's watching it on TV tonight.
Your kids, yeah, you can tape it.
It is live.
They can watch it on YouTube later.
Okay. Yeah, they can.
Alert them. Thanks so much.
Tell your daughter, send a note to your daughters.
We'll do that.
This is what your tuition is doing.
Well, we want to thank you. We appreciate you.
Very much so.
Stepping up to the plate and wanting to help out your new adopted home. Welcome to Norfolk.
You're welcome. I love it here in Norfolk. It's a great town.
Yeah, we're lucky to have good people. Someone's coming to the door.
Oops.
It's a great, it's a great, it's a great town, obviously. So, can you just give a little bit of your background, Jim? I may, you've got a very...
Sure. Yeah, my resume's not quite up to date. So in March, I left Xerox. My job there was program and project manager for the city of Providence, Rhode Island. And I was in charge of red light enforcement and parking enforcement. So if you ever got a ticket in Providence, I want to apologize. And if you ever paid it, I want to thank you. But basically, it was project and program management for their programs down there.
Nice.
Since then, about a month ago, I joined a small consulting company based in California. And we consult with cities and municipalities as they prepare RFPs for parking and red light enforcement. So we work with the cities as they prepare to put out bids, write their bids for them, consult with them, and see what they need for contracts and so forth. So that's, that's a little bit about my background. But both, most of my experience has been in project management and program management in different capacities.
Okay. Yeah, I can see that. Lot, lot amount of red lights, too.
A lot of red light business, yeah, which is not, I don't think it's applicable here in Norfolk.
It's a tough haul here.
Yeah, we have one.
We've got one.
Probably not a lot of business. But Massachusetts doesn't have any right legislation anyways, but Rhode Island does.
Oh, really? It's a legislative thing for us?
Yeah, it has to be enacted by state legislation.
Seems like it's something they should do.
Well, it's controversial, for sure. I mean, some people like it, some people don't, you know. But people certainly shouldn't be running red lights, that's for sure.
Yeah, seems like a no-brainer, but...
Yeah.
I don't know, the controversy side, you know. I have had, I've gotten tickets for going through, you know, not paying tolls like that when they get to you in the mail.
Right.
It's always a nice surprise.
Yeah, it's always a nice surprise, yes.
So what, but obviously, project man, what are some of your interests or what would you...
Well, I mean, I'm interested, although I haven't had the experience. I know you have a committee on utilities and conservation and renewables.
Yep.
And that's one area I'm definitely interested in. But I'm all open to suggestions, too, where you folks think I might fit in and make the most positive impact, be fine, too. I would like to be on a committee that's fairly active, you know, that meets regularly and, you know, has discussions and moves forward.
Marion?
Just to check, I know we have an opening on conservation.
We have, yeah, we have community preservation precinct one.
The general for CPC?
Yep. Right, but it's got to be precinct one, which I'm not, I didn't look to see where Jim...
I'm at Norfolk at 1:43.
Seco.
I mean, Seco, I'm sorry.
That is precinct one.
I'm not sure. The three precincts from last year, I'm not sure which...
It would be the suspected crime.
Okay. So that's one possibility.
That's precinct one, right? Oh, okay. Good.
Conservation Commission, there's plenty of openings. Capital Outlay, Design Review, Energy Committee, and Insurance Advisory Committee. Very highly demanded.
Because you mentioned energy, because I'm, you know, they have a meeting coming up on February 10th, if you wanted to get a flavor of what's going to go on there.
Okay.
They invited me to come. I think our new, we have a contract grant employee doing some energy conservation for us, too. A gentleman from town, by the way. It's a good committee of, you know, hard, dedicated, working folks. Like I said, I'll send you, if I get, if I can grab your email, Joseph, if I don't have it, I can forward you to me.
So I think it's right at the top there, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, yep, Comcast.net, got it.
Okay.
But I would tell you that the two committees that would be more active.
Yeah.
More involved would be the Conservation and CPC.
Okay.
They meet every month.
Yeah.
Their work never ends.
Sure.
It's ongoing. Energy, they do great work, but they tend to be more spotted, if you will, in their activities. And Capital Outlay is really only around our town meetings.
Okay.
Conservation, we've had vacancies on conservation for...
Couple of years now.
Two years.
And how big is that committee? Is it one from every district?
No.
Seven at large.
It's seven appointed all by the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I'd definitely be interested in that. I mean, I don't know a great deal about it yet, but...
Well, they, they need help. And I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean, they, they've been undermanned for some time.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's...
They could use an analytical thinker, and obviously, with your background, is a good thing.
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah. That is a very active committee.
Okay.
It's nonstop. John Weddleton chairs it. I can give you John's number, if you'd like to talk to him about it.
Okay, that sounds perfect, yeah.
But it's, well, you, you'll need some time to gain the basic knowledge that's associated with it and all the laws associated with it, but it's not out of reach by any stretch of the imagination. It's just, it just takes somebody to be fair and objective and...
Okay. And know the regulations and laws.
And you'll have help. I mean, there are folks on the board that have that knowledge base, that have been on the board for some time, so you have that help. But a lot of it is just fairness and logic.
Sure.
Which is true for most boards.
Right.
In theory.
Yeah.
At least we try.
Yeah, okay. That sounds very interesting.
We would love some help there.
Okay.
And it's a very active committee.
Okay.
Twice a month or once a month?
They have a meeting coming up.
Two.
I think it's once a month, but it's very, the meetings are not short.
Right.
They can go into the evenings.
That's fine. Like, I have plenty of time right now. It's a good time in my life to dig in and, and do some new things and...
I would be very excited to see someone get on that board. That'd be terrific.
Yeah, I think that'd be very rewarding for me.
I don't, I forget the, I subscribe, because I get the Conservation Committee, you can subscribe, so you get all the meeting notices when the meetings are. I forgot what the website is to check it, but they have, they have a meeting also coming up, besides talking to John. And as Jim said, there's a lot of projects going on in town that were obviously, everything goes through conservation, almost anything.
Pretty much everything that gets developed in town goes through that board.
So it's kind of neat.
Yeah.
Even, you're looking at to protect the environment and stuff like that, but you'll see a lot, you'd be on the ground floor of all the, kind of any major development, minor development, a lot of things in town are going on.
And it's a three-year term, I believe, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, you, it gives you time to acclimate yourself and to get comfortable with it, and that'd be great. I'd love to see, if you'd be willing.
Sure. No, I would. I think that'd be great.
Would you like to, would you like to test it out and go to a meeting?
Yeah, so what's the next meeting? It'd be a good idea to go to a meeting, I think.
Okay.
Is there a meeting coming up?
Yep. So Conservation is February 11th.
Okay.
7:30 in this room.
Okay.
And if you go to, just kind of a sales ad for the people watching TV, too, if you go to virtualnorfolk.org and then click on Town Calendar.
Okay.
Gives you all the committees and tells you when their next meeting is.
And do they have the contact information for the folks on the committee if I want to contact them before?
Yeah, let me give you, I'll give you the chairman's phone number.
And then when you go on that...
And I'll let them know that you're going to call.
And when you go on that site, too, Jim, you can sign up to get emails. All that, just gives me reminders, even though your chairman or their board assistant would send you out the agendas anyways. I just get it, just, because we lay these under a lot of boards, so like...
And knowing this gentleman, my guess is he's watching us as this very moment.
Okay, sounds perfect.
But I'll give him a call tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
And then feel free after 12 to give him a call.
Okay, sounds great.
But that, that would be fabulous. We'd love some help there.
Yeah, no, I'd really like that.
And that's a busy committee.
Okay, perfect.
And if you're free, I would invite you, just as of interest, like as Jim said, it's not as active, but you have, you know, you have that kind of background to the Energy Committee's attempt.
Well, that might, I might be able to do both, because like you said, the Energy Committee doesn't meet as often.
You could, yeah, you could very well.
And I'll try to attend that meeting also.
Yeah, just again, to see if you like, you know, see, again, I don't think that would be as long. And like you said, as Jim said, it doesn't meet as frequently.
Right. Well, my daughter, one of my daughter's environmental science major, and of course, I have the solar panels in my house.
Oh, okay.
Every time I talk to her, she's educating me more and more, so I think that might be a good fit, too.
Well, I just got my electric bill today, so I may be joining you shortly.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about that offline. Yeah, because they all went up, right?
I, it was almost, I'd say, a good 35, 40% higher.
Right. Yeah, because they're blocking with the solar panels. But we can talk about that later, I can tell you all about it. I'm almost an expert.
I've got a great location for it, too.
I have, yeah, I have a picture of no trees.
You do as well.
I have really good, I have no trees, nothing in the picture. I think it'd be ideal.
Well, it's nice to put them in the back of the house. That's one of the things.
And I can't do it.
I can't, I have nothing in my backyard, not one tree.
Yeah, Norfolk is a little different, but some places, like down the Cape, where they have historical areas, you can't really put them on the front of the house, but Norfolk is fine.
It's funny, because usually it's a thought, you know, because the law allows you to have almost by right. I didn't think that the Cape could zone it that way.
Obviously, they've got historical districts or...
Oh, that's right. Oh, and historical, this you can't, okay.
Six egg and Yarmouth and that area.
Yeah, makes sense.
Very sensitive to that.
Well, I, I hope your visit goes well.
Okay.
Love to have you on that board.
Okay, thank you so much. No, I'll definitely be at that meeting.
And let us know, yeah.
Very nice to meet you.
If he urges, then, because that, the next meeting, we'll put on the agenda, we can, you know, we can do the nomination and appoint you.
Can you guys meet once a month?
Uh, every two weeks.
Oh, okay.
First and third Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Thanks for coming in. Welcome to Norfolk.
Thank you, I will, I will.
Where are you going, Marion?
She says, she says she's going to California, but...
You're going to California? North or south?
Uh, north.
San Francisco.
Nice. She's going to bring back wine for everybody. I already...
Take your, take your...
Thank you.
Thank you for yours.
We're here.
Be sure to bring your own water.
Yeah.
There's a shortage.
All right, since Jeff's not here...
If you find it, you can drink it.
Jack, we want to, we'll bang out the easy things on the Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, we can open the warrant. That's a no-brainer.
We could open the one, too. Okay, you want to make a motion on...
I move to open the warrant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Aye. It's a little hard, really, Jeff, right?
You're playing double duty here now, my friend.
No, it's like, I'm sorry. Just, all right, just for, just to update for people at home on the warrant schedule, then. So we opened it, warrant articles due in final form by 4:00 PM, February 19th. No exceptions. Board of Selectmen closed the warrant review articles March 10th. Warrant sent to Town Council March 11th. March 24th, order of articles, warrant drafted, May 5th, town meeting.
While we're on the warrant, can I bring up a potential article? How does, how do you feel about the possibility of bringing forward a warrant article regarding the zoning enforcement?
She, what do we, how does it, what do we have it as now?
Currently, the building inspector is a zoning enforcement officer. When we posted the position for our planner, we included in the job description the consideration for becoming our zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
And he's been on board now for some time. I think he's comfortable in that role. And it's, it's a role I think would be well-suited to that position, but that's just my opinion. But if nothing else, I'd like to put a placeholder there, and then when Jeff's here, we can discuss it and see whether or not the board wants to support putting it on the warrant.
I'm fine with that.
That'd be okay?
Yeah, be with me. Like I said, it's up, you know, let's talk about it with Jeff. That's fine. No, I agree.
To put a placeholder for it, and next meeting, when we can kick it around and see if we want to go forward with it.
Okay.
Jack, you got that?
Got it. Yep.
Thank you.
Also, do we want to wait for Jeff, then, too? I know on the warrant, or came back, Jack, was brought, well, discussion about the moderator term?
There was. You know, I think I told you in an email, Jay and I had the discussion just whether or not we wanted to have changed, you know, the moderator is the only elected office that we have that is a one-year term. So he asked, he raised the question, do you want me to write an article to change it to a three-year term? I said, why don't you go ahead and we can, the Selectmen can kick it around and decide whether or not they want to have it on the, on the warrant. So he did. I didn't even, I don't think Marion, I don't think I did forward that to Marion, so I'm not sure, I don't think you included it, so.
Okay.
But we have that in our files.
Okay. We can talk about that, that one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand it. It's, but, I don't know. I have, I'm sort of on the crossroads on that one, because that, that has been a one-year term forever in the town. It's sort of a tradition.
The only reason...
We've had, I mean, we had Frank Gross forever, and, you know, he's always, I think, set the standard, and since then, we've actually gone through three moderators.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Mr. Winslow.
Oh, Dan, Africa Dan.
Yeah, C.C. and Al-Jay.
Yeah.
So there's, there's something to be said for keeping it for a little bit, for a one-year term. If Jay settles into this job for a period of time, then I think it might make sense to pursue that.
Yeah, I guess I, I mean, this is not, you know, solving world.
Taking the person out of it has nothing to do with the person, but I mean...
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not trying to bring that in. I just, this isn't a big issue, so I'm not, this isn't, you know, I'm not going to spend any political capital on it, if, if, if I have any.
You have tons, you have tons. Tons. You're a resident, so you have as much say as all of us.
That's true. You have a vote.
I just, from a, you know, A, I like stability.
I do, too.
And B, I like, I dislike our current process that we go into town meeting not knowing who the moderator is going to be until a week before town meeting.
That's a valid point.
So that's, that's, that's the biggest issue for me, but, you know. So we would get rid of two, of two years out of three, we would, we would know who town moderator is.
So if we put that on the, on the warrant, it wouldn't go into effect until the following year?
That's my understanding, because it would be, it would...
So he would have, the current moderator would have to run it, not just this year, but it would have to run again the following year for a three-year term?
Uh, yes.
Right?
Yes. Yeah, we'd have, we'd have the election first Tuesday in May.
Right, because town meeting is after the election, so he would have run then. He's in a one-year term. This would take effect the following year, and he'd be running for a three-year term.
Correct.
So there would be two more elections after it would take in place.
And also, goes back to the other point about, I think the moderator, people attracted that position for a reason, but we've talked about how it's difficult to get people to run.
Sure is.
You know, it's just not a fun time sometimes, so.
Yeah.
I don't think we've ever had a problem, like, remember for moderator, but it does speak to what we've talked about again. It's, you know, it's not that I say we, everything should be appointed, but...
Well, why don't we just take a placeholder on there, and are you agreeable?
Yeah, honestly, I'm always about letting people on town decide.
I'm ambivalent to it, really, one way or the other.
Because the people, like you said, tradition, they might not want to change it.
They might, but that's their vote.
Exactly, that's the way I look at it. Put it in front of them.
Sure. People decide.
Yeah. And we'll get more people coming to town meeting.
That would be good. That would be a good thing.
I think it'd be great.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you want to do the Dunkin' Donuts line race?
I was just going to say, I haven't heard of any, I don't think the zoning committee is really active right now. They did a lot for the fall, so I don't think they're pursuing any big items for the spring. We both sit on the Public Safety Building Committee. I don't, I don't think we're going to be, we're not going to have, it might be a small article, but nothing, we're not going to have the construction dollars for the spring town meeting. So I was just thinking, I don't think there's any other, other than the budget, there's no large items for the spring town meeting that I...
We need a draw, besides the budget, which is always a draw.
When is George coming back?
I don't know. Winslow, I haven't seen George.
He's gone through conservation.
Yeah.
So I suspect that he's going to want to get back with us at some point in the, but I, my understanding is right now, he's not looking for any zoning changes that we're in agreement that this will stay as is currently zoned, which is commercial and restricted age, is the last conversation we had with him. So you're probably right, there's probably nothing coming from, from that end.
Yeah.
Which should be a good thing. And we won't be ready on the public safety till the fall.
Right.
I don't know any other...
CPC, I'm sure, will have a couple.
Yeah, I've heard there's a petition or two out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nonbinding, yeah, there's, there's been talk of a nonbinding resolution, which will be...
That'd be a first.
Ballot question.
I think that's a first, isn't it?
Yeah. First in my tenure, no?
Okay.
Doug Gardner's one of our water consultants, so don't mind him.
Big crowd. We almost said two.
Actually, we're going to delay the water hearing until 10, just to, we have an audience, if that's okay with you.
We think it's going to get bigger.
Either that, or you can just fly into Boston and drive you back.
We are not delaying, Jim.
In that case, we'll do it at 7:02.
Yeah. What, can I get a motion, then we'll prove the Dunkin' Donuts line?
So moved. Yep.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There was, I had some controversial stuff about that.
Oh, sorry?
Oh, nevermind. It's got, you're very...
Passed, yeah, you are.
Yeah, right.
You've opened the warrant. We discussed some of the draft one, we're going to run out, I think, and we're going to have to go to Jack to fill some time, Jack, since it's not 7:00. You got any song and dance for us, Jack?
Song and dance? We, Jim and I attended the Public Safety Building Committee meeting, and we just, we talked about a number of items, but we have contracted with a OPM, Project Manager, for the public, the police, police and fire projects. And then the rec, in case I haven't said that in the past, they've already contracted with a project manager and architect, and we are now, had a director's meeting today for the rec, and we are probably about a week away from seeing the first, kind of, two to three different scenarios of the rec side of the building for what their floor plan would be. You know, they're, we've, we've allocated to them, Town of Norfolk has allocated to them 4,000 square feet of the footprint of the building. They need about 6,000 to 7,000 square feet, so they'll obviously be using a second story of that. So we're going to see some different floor layouts of what that could look like. They've talked about putting dispatchers on the second floor, putting the dispatchers in the, and then putting admin people on the first floor to be the, the keepers of the gate, if you will, the door, you know, ushering vendors in and out so that the dispatches aren't bothered.
Dispatches aren't bothering, distracted, yeah?
So that's where that is, there's a lot of technology components of that project going on in the background, they're working on their CAD systems and reporting systems, so that they can, you know, it's, it's the graphical interface that they use, you know, you go down, we have it today, but it'll be a much more complex system, where they look at, they get a call in, they graphical interface of right to the address, they get information on hydrants and cross streets, et cetera. He'll also have, he or she will, the dispatcher will have interfaces of where equipment is, you know, so where police cars are, so he knows how to dispatch people efficiently.
That's throughout all the towns in the district.
That's the four towns in the district. So that's, that's a huge component of the project, is getting that software built and then tested and installed for, for the station. So.
I'm sorry, based on that, you know, giving software and testing, is there an overlap fee, I mean, like, doesn't just cut over, I mean, before the four towns jump into dispatch, you know what I mean?
So the, the plan is, and this is, you know.
Maybe it's 10.
Still early in the project, so anybody who's built a house or built any project knows that these things tend to adjust backwards, and I'm still thinking this is an optimistic schedule, but the schedule as published today is that the construction of the rec, the Regional Communication Center, will be done next December. And then they'll spend another six months installing all the computer systems, because obviously that's just very intensely computerized, you know, computer systems. So they'll be doing all that over the next six months, and then be ready to go live on July 1st of 2016. But there will be a, there'll certainly be a training phase, just to get the new, well, I call the new employees, employees from the four towns that'll be joining the rec, getting them trained on the, on the new system, it's not gonna be, you know, it's not like they're going from.
Right, they're used to seeing.
You know, but it's a transition. So, there'll be a training phase, and then there will be some phase where we're running, we'll move, we won't move all four towns at the same time, we'll move, and we don't know what the schedule is, we'll move one town at a time, and there will be a parallel phase where we're still running the old system and the new system, just to make sure that everything, all the bugs are gone, and the system is up and fully functional. So. Next thing we're doing on the, on the Norfolk side, the police and fire side, is to get a, the architect bids out, hopefully that'll go out, be published next week. So, that'll happen, and then about a month from now, we'll, we'll have all the responses to that, and the, our Public Safety Billing Committee will interview and hire, select an architect, and then we'll, we'll kind of really start picking up the pace on that side of the project, and getting, we really want to have, you know, design documents constructed, and then really the cost estimates, we want to have, you know, Jim, Jim was kind of leading that conversation, driving us to a really, you know, a 5% tolerance, I think is what we've kind of settled on at the end of the day. We want to get to a really refined dollar estimate before we go back to the town and ask for money, so.
We've, we, I think the committee's in full agreement, we, we really want to get this thing nailed down, and we want to provide as precise, as precisely as we can, the detailed information of exactly what this'll entail, not just in terms of cost, but its implication, taxes, everything. So our hope is to get this done, to do, we've talked about doing a mass mailing to every single voter. With all of the detail, holding public meetings, whatever we need to do to get people.
On board.
To at least have the information, that is as precise as we can possibly get it, so we're going a step further than we've traditionally gone with this, this isn't gonna be a, you know, we think.
Right.
It will be between, we're gonna get this thing nailed down, and a 5% tolerance is pretty tight numbers for a project like this, and we all think it's doable. The OPM has met with both chiefs, Jack, did you go with the police chief?
No, I met with him independently.
Okay, and I, I met with the fire, I went through the process with the fire chief, and in terms of what the needs are, and how we can renovate that building for fire, and what we'll have to do for the police, but we're really, one thing we're very confident in is that the cost of this will be substantially lower than any other project that we brought forward to the town, which when you consider inflation and time and all of these considerations, it's pretty good, it's the best possible scenario we could get, barring not doing anything, that I think that we can bring forward to the town, it'll be a very reasonable project, so. And both chiefs, I think, have been very understanding that, you know, this, this is gonna be what we need, not necessarily what we really want.
Building function.
Yeah, we want to make it functional, but it's, it's not gonna be the Taj Mahal by any stretch of the imagination, so, so far, so good, and I think we're looking at a September, October, fall town meeting that would be exclusively for this project, and then go to ballot, hopefully, if the town or so agrees.
Great. Okay. We're 6:59, we're almost ready.
7 o'clock.
Seven?
Well, by that clock, 6:59 by mine, should be the same as yours.
I got 6:59. One second. I got 7 o'clock.
Mr. McGee, how are you, how are you feeling?
Jack, do I need to read the public hearing notice?
Well, you've only been out 24 hours a day for the last three weeks, so, you know. Did you get that windshield wiper fixed? That was funny, I rode around with Bob that morning, and the blizzard, only his side had a windshield wiper, so we're a little handicapped.
You didn't see anything anyway.
Quite the contrary.
I'll fill in for the clerk for a moment, if you will, and just read the public hearing notice, the Board of Selectmen, Licensing Board for the Town of Norfolk, will conduct a public hearing under the provisions of Chapter 101 of the Acts of 2004, Section 7, to determine the water budget for FY '16, and set prices and rates for usage of the water system. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, February 3rd, 2015, at 7:00 PM, in Room 124 of Town Hall, on Liberty Lane, signed to Norfolk Board of Selectmen.
Great, thank you. Bobby, you wanna join us?
We have Doug Gardner with us, who is a water consultant from Water Consulting Incorporated, or some creative name like that.
Not even close.
Welcome, Doug, thank you for coming out this evening, we appreciate it.
What is your firm's name, Doug?
Pioneer Consulting.
Pioneer Consulting.
He tried to throw water in there, but, okay.
He'll change it, I don't know.
Lot of water, it's probably taken already. So, what do you have for us, then, Doug? Robert, you wanna start?
Let Bob start.
All right.
Yeah, we started some time back with this process, as we do every year, we give the public a chance to make comments, from some months back till now, and what you have in front of you is some, we've got some activity, and I threw my kind of quick thoughts and answers highlighted in red, and some I didn't answer, we can discuss, but that came in from the public, and some good questions, some.
Some other, some other comments. Some good questions and some good comments.
Right, we'll leave it at that.
In some of these comments, I noticed it said water and solid rate discussion, but this is just about water, this is the water.
Yeah.
It's okay, no, it's fine, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
So I don't know if you just looked at them, if you might have some questions with regards to the comments, if there's, if you want them read out loud, or.
You didn't comment, Bob, I know it has nothing to do with the water rates, but the comment regarding the stickers? On the back page?
On the back page or the very first?
The last, the last comment. About doing away with the bag stickers, but raising the rates for the car sticker?
Yeah, I saw that, like I said, I, you know, I concentrated mostly on the.
I know, I was just curious what you thought of that.
I, I think we got a successful program going now, Jim, we haven't raised the, the fee, the fee for the cars that come in at $60, I think $65, you can go through the mail-in and say $5, haven't raised that since I've been here, and probably some, actually, we have, I think, just $5, insignificant compared to some towns, I think if you even go down the Cape, you're gonna see $150 a car per year, and then there's a second, second car sticky you can get, but the bags are $2.50 apiece. It's easy to manage, the only thing that we had discussed before is maybe getting some colored bags that they could purchase, so the bags would be fitted, the right size, because a lot of, a lot of bags you can buy is, you know, thanks, Jack, a lot of the bags you can get are like 60-pound bags, that, you know, construction bags, and a lot of people will put, you know, three or four, stuff their bags with that, and that comes in, and kind of tips the scale a little bit, not in our favor, but for the most part, people are good, and we watch out for that, so I'm really content.
Okay, no, I was just curious.
And we, you know, it's not like we turn a profit on this, we, we run solid waste like an enterprise account, and, you know, if we can just wash costs, we're happy with that.
Okay, it has nothing to do with water rates, I apologize, I just was reading that, it was an interesting comment. Hopefully you don't get any more snow, and you can not have to be out 24/7 here, Bob.
Tomorrow, the next day, snow, but that's okay.
Well, we wouldn't argue about two inches, well, we'll just ignore that.
Otherwise, the comments.
We had one comment that just talked about the rates are, water rates are reasonable, and complimented the higher tier, you know, we have a four-tier system, so there was a compliment for that, another one, somebody who just thought pretty much everything with the water department was bad, so. Water quality, water rates.
I did, if you look down halfway through the first page towards the bottom there, a lot of the comments are always, you know, concerned about the rates and what people will be in charge, and so I just put a comparison in there, based on 2012 statistics, and that was done by Bond Brothers, I believe, Tyon Bond.
Tyon Bond.
Tyon Bond.
Right, and even though they're not pinpoint accurate, they're, it's, it's pretty relative to, you can see what we fit in with all the towns, so if you look at, if you go from the highest, Foxborough's got the most, Franklin, Norfolk fits right in there, then this Walpole, Rentham, and then Medfield, Medfield is drastically low, I'm really not sure why, other than our water superintendent, who has done some consulting work over there, thinks that he, they figure in the solid waste rates with them.
Well, they also have a mature system. They have, they have a much broader-based, mature system.
Could be, yeah.
And the majority of their town is actually on town water.
Could be, and then, I don't know if the tax office pays for any of that, or, but, you know, it could be, so you can see from here, but I will say one thing with this comment from this person, he's right, because this area is just high, when you look at some of the towns around the city, and some of the towns down the Cape and stuff like that, so, but.
I think it's Jim's point, though, I mean, it's high, but then you have to do it for a number of users, we don't have, I don't know of these towns, but I bet you we have part of the smallest water base too, because how many customers we have?
200 users.
Yeah, we're about 50%, 50%, well, 50% town, pretty close to that, I think.
You know, so, I mean, it has to be spread, so it's difficult, more than you do, really.
Right, when it comes to rates too, I gotta tell you that Doug's been my educator here, he's been, since I've been here, our consultant for water rates, he works for many other municipalities, private systems, and he comes to us pretty much unbiased, where we'd have a tendency to just like, keep the rates where they are and stuff like that, Doug'll tell you the way it is, and still, we haven't raised rates in four years. As we all know, and I think it's gone pretty public now, and the more people that know, the better, that we're in search of new source, we need another well, and that's gonna need to be financed, over the last few years, because we, not because we haven't raised the water rates, but we haven't taken a lot of projects, knowing that this day would come that we'd have to find some new water, so we've built our return earnings, and last certified retained earnings, excuse me, I think was up over $700,000, so I think that they, what, did they get certified in October, Jack, or something like that?
Yeah, it's as of June 30th, and it's certified in September or October timeframe.
So we've been kind of like what you say, saving, and so, although we're, we're recommending that we don't raise the rates this year, we would like to put a place marker for next year, or put a bug in the rear for next year, I think that we need to, gonna have to go up, because to finance a new well, it could be from any, you know, from a million and a half to $2 million, we got a good head start with the 700-plus in the retained earnings, but don't forget that, that finances equipment, and, and you need some in the bank at all times. So for this year, we're recommending that we stay pat, but next year, we didn't put figures together, we'll figure a way to, not figure a way to, but we'll probably apply some percentage increase to the tiers, as our recommendation.
Now, Bob, do you know offhand, has the retained earnings, has it been, is it the same amount roughly every year, or has it been increasing, decreasing, you know what I mean?
It's been pretty steady, Scott, before you took seat here, I think it was probably five years ago, we only had $50,000 in, because we had multitude of leaks, we were, you know, given, you know, water was just going back into the ground at a, at one short period of time at a 50% rate, so, and then we had some major breaks, and, you know, money was spent, but.
We spent some, and we spent some retained earnings on meter replacements and some other system upgrades that.
Yeah.
We also financed some of the repairs.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, and question on that, how, we don't have many of those going on now, so we're not, there's no really ongoing outlay, I assume, we haven't had one of those in a while.
Are we talking about?
Where we financed the repairs for homeowners.
Two this year, zero, none last year.
And two this year.
Right, but still, we put it in the budget, we put a few bucks in the budget for those, you know.
But the recapture on that should be.
Right, we're earning. Last year, we got $28,000 back.
Right.
So that will help the retained earnings next year.
Right. Yep, that will help.
So what are the rate, what are the current rates, and what are we, we're obviously staying the same, what are, can you just give us the rates?
You know, I don't know if you have a copy of that, and I didn't bring one, forgive me for that, when we didn't propose an increase, it's the same as last year.
Okay, whatever that was, okay, I didn't know.
I think Doug has it.
I think Doug has it.
Well, what about the comment, Jack, or Bob, the person that likes the tiered structure, because it does, it does, you know, promote conservation, and we have.
That's what I'm looking for, thank you very much.
A lot of people use it like spring or the summer, is there any thought, I don't know, I don't know what the upper tier was, do you have any for that, does it make sense to, you know, again, to encourage more conservation?
Let me read, let me read the rights there, so, is that what you, so, $5.39 per 1,000 gallons.
No, that's last year's. That's okay, close enough, yep.
For 0 to 15,000 gallons, $6.83 for 15 to 35,000, $8.87 for 35 to 50, and then for over 50,000 gallons, $12.52.
So we do have a big jump there, over 50 is 50 and over, and how many do we know, you know, because you just wrote down, though, that, you know, the average homeowner consumes 90,000 gallons.
That was just a, a base figure done by Tyon Bond.
So I mean, I mean, so that, so everyone's getting charged, or, not everyone, but theoretically, someone, most, most homeowners are getting hit, sometimes at 12.52, and we're saying if they did a better job, maybe don't, don't run the dishwasher as much, don't take long shots, I mean, we're trying to.
Like swimming pools, irrigation, 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 really.
Bob, what are the indirect costs?
Indirect costs, if I slip up, I hope you give me some tough questions tonight, because I want, because I got my left-hand man here with me, and I love hearing them.
All right, we'll start with that one, indirect costs.
Do you want the total, or do you want?
What are they, definitions?
The indirect costs, well, they're comprised of a number of different things, but for the most part, it's the, the time that departments within the town of Norfolk provide to the enterprise fund, and a number of years ago.
So these are, these are allocations, then, back to the water department from other departments?
Interfund transfers is how they're handled.
Okay.
And a number of years ago, I completed a indirect cost study for the town, and since then, they've just been periodically updated, but you've got health insurance in there, you have vehicle insurance, you have, for example, time that the mechanic spends on repairing water department vehicles, there's time in there for Bob for the time that he spends.
His time is up here.
Yeah.
His time is up in salaries.
Okay, he's up in salaries?
He's up in salaries.
But the treasurer, the accountant.
The town accountant, Jack's office may be in there, I don't recall.
Well, that's only three bucks, so.
It's worth only three bucks.
Do we lower that to 2.50?
I don't know, Marion deserves the three. But they're costs that are provided by the town to support the enterprise.
Is the majority of that benefits?
If you can, if I can tickle that, I'll, I'll let you know.
That's 115 grand, that's why it just stood out to me.
You've got a lot of benefits in there, you've got all the health insurances, you've got vehicle insurance, property insurance, you have retirement in there, I can't say if it's the majority, I don't have, I don't have this.
There is, there is a breakout of this somewhere.
Julie should have that, yes, town accountant.
I get that every year from Julie.
She ends up charging, you know, she gives them an estimate, and then charges them the actuals for health insurance and other items. So, all in favor?
I have all this on my computer, if you want me to go.
No, no, that's okay, I just, you know, we got you here, so I just thought, are the liens delinquent payments?
Yes.
Is that, has that improved, or is that still?
It's usually pretty consistent, from year to year.
We have had some discussions, Bob mentioned it today, of going to quarterly billing rather than semi-annual.
On the liens?
Well, on all the.
On billing.
On the billing.
In general.
Yeah.
And the thought, I think the treasurer, Cheryl Kelly, has suggested that before, I just think, and her comment is, I think it's easier for people to budget for a smaller bill.
But it would increase our costs?
Not, not significant, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost us, I mean, we talked about this today too, would, you know, as far as collecting the information, that doesn't cost us anything, because we get all the wireless reads anyway, so it would just be postage, and then the collection cost, but that's, that's really kind of a soft cost that won't change, postage is the.
I mean, does it, I mean, just my gut reaction says we actually lose money by going to quarterly as opposed to semi-annually, but, you know, we don't get any real earnings on our investments by law, so.
No, but.
I mean, does it help with cash flow, or?
It does help with cash flow, you're gonna detect leaks a lot faster, because.
Why would the billing detect leaks faster?
Somebody has a high bill, they wait three months instead of six months.
Okay.
And, you know, your rates are fairly high, and, you know, I think it would be easier to, you know, pay four bills that are smaller rather than two bills that are larger.
I think most importantly, I think it would just serve the user, just so they don't get hit up with, you know, a bigger bill every, twice a year.
Could we combine it with the tax bills?
I would advise against that.
Why is that?
Well, we only mail those out twice a year, anyway, so.
It'll be tougher for people to pay, if you're sending a tax bill and a water bill.
But we, we send a tax bill quarterly.
Well, we. But you may send them on.
We collect a quarter, we only send them out semi-annually.
Well, what would be different, Jack?
Well, how would you send out a, you can't send out a water bill, send out a water bill on the actual amount used.
No, but I'm talking about the same cycle.
But my point is, we only mail out your real estate bills twice.
Correct, but it's paid quarterly.
Right.
You're getting two bills mailed to you at one time.
So we could have them, we could have them linked on the same time, but we could mail two, but we, theoretically, I think we could mail eight, you know, two of the bills with real estate bills, and two of the water bills independently, if that's what you're looking for.
To adjust.
Yeah, we just. Yeah, I just, I wouldn't want to do that, I, I would recommend that you keep the billing separate, you're an enterprise fund, you want to keep everything.
Well, I wasn't talking about combining the bill, that's not what I meant, I was just thinking of timing.
Do you want it on the same bill, or on a separate bill?
Whether, it, it doesn't matter, I, I wasn't thinking of having one bill of which a component was water and a component was tax, that's not what I meant by that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I apologize, I didn't, I didn't make it clear, I'm sorry.
The same envelope would be the water bill, that's what I'm saying, right, two stumps to return.
I'm thinking purely of costs, just, I mean, you know, there's $3,000 expense to mail, roughly, so you're gonna incur $6,000 more in expense to go to quarterly versus semi-annually, give or take a buck.
Yeah.
That's, that's my only, I mean, that's six grand, it's gotta come out of the water department, it's a budgeted item, and so I was just trying to think of some way to cut that back, that's why I was wondering, could they be mailed with the tax statements or bills or things like that, that's my only point, I just, I don't want to layer more costs, I understand the logic, I think that's a good thing, to spread the bill out for folks, I'm just trying to find a way not to increase costs, that's all.
And do we have, Jack, do we, do, we have in town, you know, we have pay online, do we have an option like all the credit card companies do now to get statementless billing, is that something we're thinking about, as Jim said, you know, that gets rid of that mailing cost?
No.
That's last year's, Jim, that's not.
Do you want to have paperless billing?
I'm sure it's cost, implement cost to maintain your costs, you know what I mean, is that something?
Yeah, no, I, I'm not sure if, I know internally, we haven't had that conversation, I'm not, I.
Just thought of it now, because I get all those things, everything, every credit card company says opt out, you know, and you give it 10 bucks if you do, or whatever, because it does decrease the mailing cost, but, especially nowadays, a lot of people pay online.
I don't, yeah, and I know we all get frustrated with me saying no, and, and I say no because state law, I just, I.
Hey, don't have to, I just, just a question, check.
Something I'll look into, it's a great idea if we can do it.
Yeah.
Doug, have you, have you seen any paperless billing?
I have not, there might not be a lot, it might be.
I mean, I believe in our people that don't have computers.
Joe Fernandez says if it makes sense, it's probably illegal, so it's.
Exactly, something worth that, I mean, again, even if it saves a few pennies.
There are days I wish I didn't. There are days I wish I didn't. Okay.
But to, to address the water rates, Bob asked me to review the, review the budget, it's not going up by a tremendous amount. Your revenues are relatively flat. There aren't big, you know, peaks or valleys with the amount of revenue coming in, you still have your wireless leases, they're right around the same, so. You know, and I know this will shock you, Jim, because I always come in and recommend increases.
I know.
I think you're okay for fiscal sixteen. But I think you will be looking at an increase this time next year, as, as Bob and Jack mentioned, that you've got the new source that will need to be developed, and you're looking at significant dollars to do so. We can fund some of that from the retained earnings. The retained earnings is around seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. A hundred and sixty-one thousand was contributed in fiscal fourteen. So there was a, you know, modest increase in retained earnings. So all things being equal, the debt's not going up, your costs aren't going up that much, the revenues are, may increase a little, may decrease a little, but I think you're in a, you're in a pretty solid position right now. But you do need to consider that next year, you're going to have to raise your rates. We'll fund, as I mentioned before, I got a little off track, we'll fund the, the new source development through a combination of debt and free cash retained earnings, which will, and whatever we can use for retained earnings will ultimately keep the total costs down. You know, bonding isn't free, even though rates are low and they're very favorable, there's still interest involved.
Can I borrow that back again?
Sure.
Jeff, New York, can I have, you have any questions on the?
And at this point, it's too, it's too early to say how much the increase would be, but we're just, I, I hate to say we're putting you on notice, but we just want you to be aware that this time next year, don't be surprised if, if an increase will be warranted. And it's been, it'll be five years.
Can you remind me what the existing debt is for?
Why, just give you a debt schedule.
Yeah.
It's still up here on that column, Jim. Nothing about the purchases for the debt?
Mm-hmm.
That breaks down.
Oh, I'm sorry, you just gave it to me. Thank you.
So you really don't see any debt drop off until fiscal two thousand nineteen. So in a perfect world, if we could not have the new source debt come on for a few more years, as some of the debt is coming off, we can add some of the debt, which will aid in rate stabilization.
Because that's like ninety-four thousand dollars coming off. And by the time you do new source and get it, it would find out.
You're probably looking at a hundred and fifty thousand a year, two hundred thousand in debt service, depending on the rates and how much you need to borrow.
How much would you say roughly?
Well.
Last year you brought in a hundred and sixty-four.
Well, we, we did some very.
Retained earnings?
Back-of-the-napkin numbers, that said, if we had a two million dollar project, it's a hundred and fifty.
One sixty-one.
One sixty-one.
Hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand that we would have to finance per year.
So if you finance seven fifty.
Yeah, you can, I mean, we, you know, a lot of this.
At least.
Say maybe a million, say, just say a million.
Yeah, and that's what Jack and I based our, you know, very quick calculations on, was a million.
So with four.
You can finance it for twenty years, so.
Okay.
I mean, a lot of this, you know, this discussion is, is obviously very hypothetical.
If that flow were to continue.
Well, you know, as we get information from environmental partners on well sites and, and we start exploring those, then we can.
But we have to base it on real information.
But why wouldn't, why wouldn't that work? I mean, what have we been averaging in retained earnings every year? One sixty-one last year.
Right around what you're seeing right now.
Hundred and sixty a year.
But there's a, there's a component that we haven't talked about, and that is that we've stopped off work in the field. So we haven't done any bid work, we've been fitting into our budget some special projects that we've been doing, you know, like the tank stirr and, you know, a few things. But consciously have done that, and we've put away some leaks, so right now, we've got a lot of, you know, concrete pipe in the ground that we want to replace, you know, projects like that, looping. So if we were to finance some of that.
But if, all I'm saying is, if we financed it over twenty years, a million bucks, four percent, roughly sixty grand a year. And you've got, if you're averaging a hundred and sixty thousand in retained earnings, even if you took another seventy-five to do what you need to do, retained earnings would cover the debt.
Last year you brought in one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars through all the different sources of revenue that you have. I know in fiscal, is it fiscal seventeen, you're going to lose some of the wireless, wireless revenue?
Yeah, one of the towers is closed, is shutting down.
So you're going to lose some revenue there.
You could always, like, I work with that guy, they could always get another tower to come on, probably, another carrier to come on.
Okay. But I can't, you can't, you can't base your rates on that.
Right, no.
So you brought in one point six million, one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand. Your budget is, you know, a little under one point six, so there's not a lot of cushion there. You didn't spend, the water department didn't expend their entire budget, so that adds to the, the amount that is returned.
Which they've been under budget every year.
Which, yes. So all things considered, if you spent your entire budget, I would recommend a rate increase, because you'd be cutting it too close. You know, about a fifty thousand dollar cushion, which if we have a cool or wet summer, you'd be in a negative position, but with the way, you know, the history of the spending, the fairly consistent revenues, you know, I'm comfortable that you can maintain your present rates and still maintain the health of the enterprise fund.
And I'm just looking for ways to continue to maintain those rates and still fund what we need to do.
But you're, you're seeing those kind of retained earnings increase, 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 again, because we purposely have not proposed any projects.
I understand, but if.
If we did continue to go like that, and that was the pattern, we'd be looking at dropping the rates.
I, I'm not suggesting you do that, there, there has to be an investment in the system.
Sure.
But what I would hope we could do for next year, before we just come back and say we need a rate increase, just my opinion, is that we, we look at the pattern of retained earnings, we look at the projects that you need to use those funds for, outside of new sources, and look at what component of that, or what amount of that, we need to allocate to that, and which amount may potentially be allocated to serve as funding the debt. Because if, if we've got seventy, let's say we borrow a million bucks, that is about a sixty thousand dollar payment per year at four percent that could possibly be covered by retained earnings. I mean, I'm just, I would want that analysis done to some degree, so that we can take a look. You know, just don't come back and say, hey, we need a million bucks, we got to go raise the rates.
No, no, that's, that's not how it works, Jim.
I know it's not how it works, but I mean, I want.
The way, the way I'm hired by the town is, Bob calls me, and if there are no major projects, if we're not recommending large rate increases, I come in and just do a, you know, do a quick analysis. Look at the revenues, look at the expenses, look at the projects coming on, looking at your debt, attend the meeting here, and, you know, we can come up with a reasonable decision, whether we need to have a slight increase or maintain the present rates. When new projects come on board, it requires more work on my end, and it requires a much more detailed analysis, similar to the one I did maybe four years ago for you. And that's the pattern. You do a detailed analysis every, you know, three to five years, depending when you need it, and you just look at the rates on a year-to-year basis.
The two thousand eleven report, if you're talking.
It's the one that came in through environmental partners, I believe, so you were on the payroll at that time, yeah.
Yeah, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, somewhere in that ballpark. So that's what we'll do. Next year, you're going to require some more detailed analysis, I'll, you know, I'll have a lot more answers, I'll have, you know, some information that you can dig your teeth into before I actually come to the meeting, so that you can, you can load up for me.
Well, you know, give you a head start, and just look, look into the fact of how we might be able to finance this to retained earnings.
No, I, I like the questions, you know, it's, it's good.
It's an opportunity.
Yeah.
Think of it as an opportunity.
Makes me feel alive, how's that? Gets my blood flowing. No, but that's what it's supposed to be, that's how this process works. You know, you just don't rubber stamp everything we tell you, you ask questions, you dig, you.
You've always done a good job for us.
Yeah, so, well, thank you.
And Whitewater is going to have that report pretty quick, isn't it, another week or two?
EPG, yes. And that's, that's a, a report, they've done, you know, they just did a water assessment report that, you know, feverishly made sure that everybody getting read, that proves our concern for need of water, and this, this one here is now a identifying sites in a little bit more detail, so we're not just going out digging holes here and there, we have good reason and methodology for that investment.
Yeah, look forward to that.
Yep.
Jeff, do you have any, before we?
No, I think, and I'm sorry that I'm late this evening, the weather kind of changed, changed the schedules.
Thank you.
But I think the high points are that the town does need a new water source, and I know you're doing work along those lines. It's come up as something of a concern for this board as well as for the planning board. And I believe the conversation as far as rates and debt, in terms of debt burden, I think, are largely related to that future source in terms of having sufficient funds to, to, to secure that, that additional source. So, so I'm on board with all of that, you know, for the record, so no, no surprise there. In terms of what makes sense in terms of rates this year versus next year and years thereafter, you know, having come to the meeting late, I certainly respect the opinion here of my colleagues, particularly Jim, when it comes to financing and such, you know, that's his, that's his shtick, so, so I would certainly support that in terms of his opinion.
Well, we look forward to next year.
Thank you.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah, I'd love a motion.
We do have one person in the audience.
Public hearing, yes, would you like to be heard, sir? On the water rates?
I, I move to set the water rates consistent with this year's rate schedule.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Guys, thanks, I look forward to that next year, we'll have a good, lively conversation.
You're down the Cape all the time, right?
Not all the time, no.
Don't you go to the lighthouse a lot, or you have some affiliation?
Once in a while.
I'll tell you, affiliation, or your wife did, or?
My wife's family.
Oh, okay.
She's down the Cape all the time.
Oh, okay.
I'm here.
I'm down the Cape all the time, but I'm working, so.
How do you know that, then, down there?
What's that?
How do you know that? The lighthouse.
He knows everything.
Oh, I did?
Yeah, you told me last year or the year before. I live in Carwichport.
Oh, okay, then we're neighbors.
He's trying to invite you by, he's ready to buy for lobster dinner, and he doesn't remember, Doug.
I'd get the shrimp cocktails, Doug, when I go, it's very good.
He makes homemade stuff. I don't know if I've ever been there, to be honest.
Come see us.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
It's one of those things, you live on the Cape, yet you don't do any of the. The fun things that everyone else.
I know the water bill. I do, I, it's interesting, because I think I sent it to you one year, I, because I have a house down there, I, you know, get the water bill and and all that kind of stuff, I find it interesting how other towns do it, and, you know.
That's a water district, and that is, yeah.
It is, yep, yep.
A little different than.
It is different, yep.
Listen, not to take you off task, we're going to be out doing a little snow removal tomorrow night. Mentioned it to Jack.
Good to see you, thanks, thanks a lot.
Doug, I'll see you before you get in the car, but, um.
I think that's a hint, Doug.
That's where he said wrong, Doug.
He's coming up from the Cape, I want to say goodbye with a good handshake, so, but anyway, just to let you know that we'll be around town tomorrow night. There's a, I think we got officially fourteen inches of snow this last storm, with twenty-four just before that, and two to four, I think I saw on television before I came here for Thursday night and then Friday. And then something more threatening is a possibility next week, Monday.
We don't want to talk about that.
We don't need to talk about that, no, but there's a lot of, a lot of mailboxes that people just can't get at, and we're going to spend some time just scouring through the neighborhoods through the darkness tomorrow night. The guys right now need their rest, we'll get up tomorrow, and we'll start that, and then move a little bit of snow in the center of town, but just thought I'd
Thank you.
Let you know, and anybody else that's listening.
Yes, so.
Before you leave, I, you know, you and I did take a cruise in the middle of that storm, thank you for that. But that afternoon, I did, I think I went around most of the town, you guys did a phenomenal job, in very miserable conditions.
Yeah.
So, and I don't know how many calls you got, but I actually had several calls complimentary, complimenting you and complimenting your crew on the work that was done. So just wanted to pass that on, because it's not a fun job.
I'm along for the ride, it's the guys that do it, you know, you've heard the story before, but I, I passed your emails on, I got one from you, I got one from Jack, I, I don't know a couple others, so that kind of thing goes a long way. We, we print it, and we put it up on the, on the board so they can see it, you know, so, appreciate it.
Got to get that wiper fixed, though, so I can see where you're going.
Wiper's fixed.
With the mountains of snow, do you foresee some additional removal, you know, literal removal of the snow, having to
Well, that's, that's what I was saying, tomorrow night, we're going to remove the commerce area, you know, the commercial areas. Main Street, a little bit of Route one fifteen, but, I mean, we can't move all the snow, it's going to go down to the transfer station where we have a, a site where we can dump it and push it over, and then, you know, an elevation.
There's a cul-de-sac over Noon Hill where they would.
It's full. I'm not sure there's going to be much pavement left.
An island in the middle of your cul-de-sac?
No, there's not.
I have an island in the middle of my cul-de-sac, and it's, it's getting full.
It's stunning.
My street was narrow to begin with, tried two cars on it now, there's nowhere to go, nothing you can do, it's just too high.
I just want to add my two cents to it, I think you've done, your guys and ladies have done a great job, and having said that, we do need to vote to deficit spend the, the budget.
Oh, thank you, that's right.
Even though we were in great shape three weeks ago, we've, the last couple of weeks have been expensive, so.
Well, this is, this is, should we label this as Mr. Garrett's executive order number three?
Sure.
I think I jinxed those. I think I had that conversation with you, I said, boy, that'd be nice not to have that spend this, this winter, and boy, within a couple of days.
Well, they're getting even.
I, I have, I have no thoughts that we'd ever, at this point anyway, the way we budget, that we would ever underspend the budget, but, but at least not having to do a two to three hundred thousand dollar transfer in the spring, that would be, that would be a win.
All is not lost yet.
We got some.
We're still hanging in there.
Oh, it's coming.
So I will make that motion.
I'll second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Deficit spend, Bob.
Thank you all.
Thank you, get better.
Thanks again, Doug.
Hope you feel better, Bob.
Thank you, thank you, Bob. I know Bob is going out to get some salt, we were.
Thank you.
We're at that time of year again, too, so, there's a lot of things going on with the DPW.
Okay. Are we have to close the public hearing?
We do.
We do.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing's closed, thank you, everybody.
And I remember, Marion's easy, I can't believe she didn't look at me yet, I was a little, I think we voted, I'm not sure we closed it, so it's closed.
Okay, what do we have now, Jack?
Lake Street.
We have six minutes. Oh, we have Lake Street to talk about.
Come on up.
Joining us now at the stage is Mr. Scott Bragg.
I was just to tell them to crowd at home. During it on stage is Scott Bragg, no, not on camera.
So I know Ray did a. Synopsis. Synopsis of the Lake Street, at Jeff, Mr. Palumbo's request, and I did not bring that synopsis with me.
I have it here on my.
Are outstanding.
But that synopsis only relates to the current sort of circumstances, isn't it?
Right, it talks about the planning board process. It doesn't speak to whether the, the road is a town road, private road, that type of thing, it's just.
Or even the process we went through.
Issue of the tree removal and, and that aspect of it, so.
And how much we spend to maintain it, just because of the way it is.
So I guess, you know, I can, I can start, and I'm sure there's a lot more that we can talk about, but we're, we're at a process where, you know, we went through really a couple of year process of this, before this locking level, where we met with the residents, you folks met with the residents here and out on the, in the, on the street, and had a lot of discussions.
May, may I, Jack?
Sure.
We, we went through a process that I, I don't ever remember anybody doing before, I mean, it's, it's a town, in our view, it's a town-owned road, it's been on the maps forever, predates any process for accepting roads in town. And we were spending between sixty and seventy-five thousand dollars, if I remember, every year to go down and do repairs, because roughly two-thirds of that road is. because roughly two-thirds of that road is not paved. And so we had to do something. I mean, we, we just, we were throwing money away, because it is, nothing was sustained or maintained. So we initiated a process that was intended to involve all the residents to have input as to how we could solve this. And, and we started with the premise of saying status quo wasn't one of the options on the table. And you were on the board, then I thought, well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, we said the meeting was, we had 50 people, so.
Yeah, and, and, well, I think it was very well attended. I, I would say 90% of the residents, if, it's probably somewhere in that range, attended the meeting. And we had two different.
We had some crowded rooms, yeah.
Yep, I mean, we, we had two lengthy meetings. And at the end of it all, the consensus was that we were going to pave it, but do it in a way that we retained sort of the rural conditions that are in existence today. In other words, not make it a 24-foot road and do all of those things and just, but we had to pave it so we wouldn't continue to go down there and experience the problem. And that was clearly the majority of the group. Not everyone agreed with it. There were some in the minority that wanted to keep it the way it was. But as I said, it's a town road, at least in our view. It's a town road. We've been receiving Chapter 90 money on it for some time, and it's been on the maps forever. So, um, we went over and above, and I, I think. I mean, we've never done that for any other road that I know of, to, to try and make it as comfortable for the folks that live there, which to me is the right thing to do. And come up with a solution that met the majority of those that lived on Lake Street. And, um, and we made that decision and we moved on. And then Bob went through a, a rather detailed process of taking a look at what he needed to do and not do. And then it, this year has come to the point where we're beginning to follow through on that, and thus it goes to the planning board for a tree removal. I'll turn it over to you.
So during the tree removal hearing, I had taken some notes in terms of people that had attended and choose to, chose to, uh, chose to speak. So it's a bit of a straw poll, but these are the notes that I have, just to give you, uh, I guess, a smattering of opinions. So the first person who spoke is against the idea of paving the road. The next person was for it. The next person wants the street paved, but not in a way that they would deem a Band-Aid fashion. The next person that spoke said they were cautiously optimistic. It's scary to walk down the road at night. The next person said, no, they don't want it paved. The next person, yes, they'd like it paved. The next person supports whatever the people who aren't on the paved portion of the street want. And the next person says, yes, they would like it paved. So those are the people that spoke at the tree hearing. So, yes, there are a few people who are still opposed to paving the road, but, I mean, clearly, there's a significant portion of people. And I would say the majority of people that spoke are either for paving the road or neutral to the extent that they respect the, the interests of the other people on the road. And if that's something that's important to them, because it's not paved in front of their property, they are agreeable to the, the concept. So, you know, separate from the whole question about whether it's a town road, private road, and you're hearing some reasonable support for paving the road from the people that live on the road.
Well, I, I attended that meeting as well, uh, in the back of the room and listened. And that wasn't what the meeting was about. The meeting was about tree removal. The, the decision to pave the road had already been made.
Yeah, correct. But I figured it was appropriate to share that. I was, it's, it's appropriate to share that, because that's probably the same type of input the board had. I wasn't a member of the board of selectmen at the time, but that's probably the, um, type of input.
Absolutely.
Both extremes, and then you heard some people that were somewhat neutral.
Forty to 50 residents maybe on Lake Street, somewhere in that range.
It was pretty close. But I think the whole point, though, is it, is it just a tree issue now? I know what you mean.
Well, the planning board component was that Bob was going to petition the planning board to be allowed to take down some trees, which quite frankly are going to fall on the road. I mean, you know, the road system, I've driven it, you've driven it. I've been down it many times. There, there are trees that, I don't know what's keeping them up. I mean, the, the root system is eroded, so they're, they're lovely trees, but they're going to fall. They're dangerous.
And there are parts of the road that it is, we went down in Bob's truck, uh, three or four weeks ago now. We went down and, you know, it's a pickup truck. It's an F-250, it's nothing, it's not, it's not a monster truck. It's a typical contractor-style truck. And we, it, we had to pull over in places to let a car go the other way. I mean, that, that road is very narrow and, and, you know, so as much as we talk about, and I, and I still think the, the mantra is to keep it as.
Right.
Close to as the current condition is, but.
But it's got to be safe.
Some of those places where Bob has taken out trees is because the road is so narrow that it does have to be widened a couple of feet, so that you can get two cars safely through there, because the cars are going to be traveling a little bit faster on pavement than they are on dirt.
And you guys took a vote that night?
Yeah, I think, and, and the point that I want to make is that if you have a, a road that's a certain width, and then suddenly it narrows down, that's a bad situation. I mean, because people don't anticipate it, you know, and, and that's what you have there. So, you know, clearly, there needs to be tree removals. So, a public hearing took place, was a few meetings. We had a number of participants. You heard some of the input, um, which, you're correct, Jim. I mean, the idea was to discuss the trees for removal. It wasn't, the idea really wasn't to discuss whether the road should or should not be paved, but some people, you know, some of the residents, they chose that as an opportunity to speak.
And your board made that clear. Your board made that clear.
So, uh, what the planning board did, and, uh, these gatherings were properly posted, is we met on Lake Street on two occasions, and we walked the entire street, and we reviewed the trees that, uh, Bob McGee, uh, had identified for removal. We made some changes in negotiation with Bob, and in a couple instances, there were residents who chose to join us for at least a portion of, of the survey. So, um, significant time. I mean, I'm not talking about a quick walk down Lake Street. I mean, we spent several hours, um, walking the street and trying to make, uh, informed decisions as to how to preserve, um, as many trees, particularly the most valuable trees, the oldest trees, the certain trees that, uh, we felt, if at all possible, um, we should try to, um, to preserve. So we, um, as a planning board, completed that process. And now, more recently, there's, um, some correspondence, correspondents that this board has received, which has caused us to pause, and perhaps that's really the next conversation in terms of our next step as a board and the next step for the town.
But did, I think the Jim's got started, did the planning board vote to remove the trees?
They did. They voted, they made, they, it was a section of the road that they didn't want Bob to touch at that particular point in time, I think 300 feet towards the end, if I remember.
And the decision was that, um, that the rest of Lake Street, there was consensus amongst the members of the planning board to proceed, more or less in the fashion that Bob had selected, with, there were some exceptions. And then in that 300-foot section, there were some questions. And what the board decided is that Bob would proceed only upon, um, discussion, further discussion with a member of the board, um, which happened to be me, just because of the circumstances in terms of, uh, um, other business in Town Hall that I had, and the fact that I had attended both, um, site walks. So I was in a position to bring feedback to Bob from the members of the board from those site walks. And, uh, final determination was made in terms of the, uh, the plan for, for Lake Street.
Is that the 300 feet down by Midway Street?
That's the 300 feet on the opposite, opposite side of the bridge from Midway.
Right.
It's on the Main Street side.
Right. So we go through this process.
And that included some decisions as far as tree replacement, some tree replacement, yeah.
So, so we, we go through this process where we went as openly as we could to, to try and get a consensus to a problem that we owned, frankly. It's a town road, we own the problem. And we go through this whole thing, and over a year and a half, I'd say, two years, probably, we've been going through this process. And then we have a resident that decides they don't like the decision and goes to court and gets an injunction to stop our work. And, and is claiming that it is now not a town road.
Was injunction granted?
And, um.
It was.
Yeah, well, we, that's not the fight. The fight is whether we own it or don't own it.
We didn't fight it.
Okay.
So we.
For now, back.
And that was this, just yesterday, I believe, or, or Thursday, it was last Thursday.
How are we going to resolve the issue whether we go to don't own it?
Well, it's, it's an interesting argument, because if, let's just, we don't think it's up for question. I mean, it's on every single map that the town has ever had as a road, and it.
It's on maps of Rentham before Norfolk.
Right, it existed before Norfolk was a town. And there was no process for accepting roads other than putting it on a map. That's how roads were accepted back in those days. They were put on a map. It's only recently where we've actually gone to town meeting and had votes to accept roads, mostly because of subdivisions and things of that nature. So I, you know, I don't think it's up for grabs, but we're going to end up, unfortunately, spending citizens' tax dollars on, I mean, it's, it is, it's just, I think it's very unfortunate that we're in a position now where we're going to be spending money on attorneys. If it's a dollar, it's a dollar that shouldn't have to be spent, uh, on this particular issue. And, and it's a shame. It, it's a shame, and, um.
I agree with you, Jim. And in addition to that, if in fact that was ever deemed to be a private road, those residents would need to.
That would be their worst nightmare.
Yeah, you know, in terms of maintaining that road, uh, in every respect.
Yep.
Would be a significant cost, and provisions would need to be made for that. And certainly, you know, the job of this board is to protect the residents of the town.
Absolutely.
And I think we feel like we're protecting the residents of the town by doing what we're doing.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, the whole purpose of the process we went through was, we had a road that was basically unsafe. They had been scenically attractive, uh, you know, in the summertime when the trees are in full bloom, and then it's, it's, it's pretty and all of that. It's dangerous. It's a dangerous road. School buses, ambulances, you know, that need to get down there to residents. It just, it needed to be fixed. So that wa, you're 100% right, Jeff. And I know you weren't on the board then, but you hit it right on the head. The whole purpose was we were trying to do something that served the best interest of the people that live there. I mean, it's, it's, if another car's coming that way and ambulance can't get down there, you know, if it's plowed, I bet it'd be hard, you couldn't get two cars by there now.
I've been down there in snow.
I mean, it's, and I haven't either since the storm.
I had a Jeep, I would go down there more often when I had a Jeep.
But now, because one resident doesn't want it paved, we're in a situation where we're going to spend tax dollars to prove what we already know.
We are, so that's, is it, are we think that's what is up for discussion, or we're going to do that? I mean, what, Jeff's alternative is play, Jeff's alternative is play chicken, then? Or can't we then get, admit that it's, not that it is, it's a private road? And then the residents can speak to their neighbors about saying, I don't want, I don't want the cost of maintenance.
Believe me, it, it, you know, it, when we got, when we were served with these papers, it ran through my mind. I was, Jack and I, and I'd forgotten one of the, who else was with us, but, uh, we, we, you know, said, all right, fine. You know, but that's an emotional wrong answer, you know? I mean, because it, it doesn't serve the people that do live there. I mean, you know, our job is to come up with the, the best answer we can that serves the folks that are there. And the right answer is, yeah, we got to fix it.
Yeah, we have to spend, you know, every other person's.
You know, you argued, I think, at one time, Jack, that you thought it should be a betterment, you know?
Well, I just, yeah.
You know, and I understand why. I understand the logic of it, because it, it's an investment that, that is a little over and above what we would normally do to a road. So your, your logic is right on. But, you know, the whole motivation of this was just to try and help and do the right thing for the people that live there. And now we're sitting in here spending unnecessary tax dollars that will probably end up wasted, in my view.
And I have to say that I was very surprised to see that injunction, because the resident that filed that injunction, Mr. McCormick, did participate in the site walk, at least the first one. He stepped out and, you know, we had some, what I thought were very reasonable conversations about what we were trying to accomplish, and, you know, some give and take, some discussion about, um, you know, perhaps, uh, you know, we would be outside the right of way if it would, uh, help preserve some trees that he felt were important to preserve.
Sure, as we should. That's the right thing to do.
Some give and take and some, and I, and I thought it was very positive. So I was, um, I was shocked, quite frankly, to see the injunction. And I'm not sure what purpose it serves, quite frankly.
Spend our money.
Have the attorneys been able to give us any kind of an estimate on what the litigation costs will be?
Well, we've already spent money going to court once, so it's, it's, you know, our, the bill's already started. Let's just put it that way. We've, I mean, not astronomical, obviously, but we've already incurred many hours of expense on this, legal expense.
I haven't asked him to do that.
It's hard to estimate anyways, to tell you, I mean.
It's, it's a whole lot of title research and, and deed research and, uh.
And, and the irony of it is, is, is that the decision that this injunction supports in that it is not a town road is the worst of options for the people on that street.
That wasn't the only thing that was in the injunction, though. Those weren't the only claims, so, I mean, I don't know, because we just, you said we didn't fight it. There's a certain other claims in there.
It was a claim for damage.
No, but there's other claims in there. Can Bob act as a DPW entry warrant? I don't know if he answered any of the, all those different questions. I know, that's, this claim, so we.
Those, those are incidental.
But we didn't address them, you know, so, I mean.
I, I think it comes down to the ownership of the public way.
Right.
Is, is the bottom line.
So we have, we have no choice, unless you're going to.
No, we have no choice. It's unfortunate, we have no choice, because you can't just turn your back on it, and you can't.
No.
It just doesn't serve the, the folks that live there to turn your back on it.
So once that happens, say, you know, it becomes, you know, you know, gets litigated and discovered that it's public, then we can proceed on based on your okay. Do we have to re, do we have to reopen any public hearings, you think, on tree? So we can go, we can all work on it?
No, we're going to get it done. Once this is resolved, we're going to get it done.
As long as it's determined it is a town-owned, town road, then, then we would have, but if, I think there probably is a chance that if it's not a town-owned road, then we gotta go to public meeting and accept it, and then go through the public hearing again, because then the public hearing wouldn't have been based on a public road, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, but that's a town-wide vote.
Right. I mean, the town voted, you know, I think there's, there's, the town voted to spend money on this town road. A town meeting has voted, um, and probably other, well.
It might not be as a meeting vote if they find out that their legal expense went up by a couple hundred thousand bucks.
Well, this road was specifically identified in the warrant article as an expenditure that the town meeting is, to Jack's point, that the town meeting approved.
I just think, it's, yeah
The voters approved it.
One piece of evidence that the town considers it's a town road is that the town meeting voted to
Right, well, I'm, I'm a Jim's camp, we're probably, it's probably going to go that way, given the way they, you know, they did town roads in the 1800s, 1500s, it's just going to go that way, it's just time now, we've already lost the cutting season, it's expense, and then we start again, you know.
Yeah, and, yeah, Bob has said, this is, this is, the timing is bad, because as you said, he was able to get a discount
Right.
tree cutter, you know, because this is kind of their off-season, but
It's going to end up costing us not just the legal fees, but more money all the way around to do what we should do anyway.
So, why can't we say to the residents, why can't we bring them back in here, and talk about some options with them? One option being that it be a private road, see what they want to do, and give them some options. I mean, Jack
Who reminded this guy?
Jack talks about a betterment, but we could say to them, what's wrong with us saying, you know, we didn't want to make this a betterment, but if, you know, if we have to spend the equivalent of paving the road on legal fees, this is going to be a betterment. I mean, what's, what's wrong with, I mean, what's
There may not be anything sort of ethically wrong with it, but to me, there's something morally wrong with it. I mean, we made a decision in good faith to go forward with a project that served the folks on the, on the street. You can't punish a street because of one person.
But some group of the street is
But they have a right, every, you know
I understand that, I'm not objecting to them having a right.
The individual has a right to have his due course. I mean, that's the system, whether we like it or not, that's the system.
But again, I think, I don't, I don't, by myself personally, I don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor.
I don't either.
But I know, you know, it's frustrating for everybody and taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, we're, I know what you're saying, but you can't do that. I mean, you know, we're not, we don't want to start a street war. I mean, you know, that's not the intent. We'll just play it out and let it take its due course and see where it goes. It's just, it's just unfortunate, because it, we, the part that frustrates me, you say you were shocked to see it, we went overboard. That's my whole point. We went beyond anything we've done on any road for any type of consideration to try and bring folks to a consensus, and we got there. There was a clear majority view as to what we were going to do. And, you know, I guess majority doesn't always rule.
Now, and you got injunctions in your pocket.
But anyway, we'll work it right through. It's very unfortunate.
So, we will continue with the legal work.
Okay, thank you.
And I, you know, I'd like to just be informed as to what this is costing the town.
I would, well, you'll tell us all, yeah. Okay, thank you. Can we, actually, Jack, is that something we could, I mean, I know it's available, and shame on me for not going and get it, but it was, so I don't mean it that it's not available, because I know it's available, but could we get a more regular recap of those legal costs, and specifically what they're for?
Sure. Yeah, I can give you a copy of the monthly bill if you
That would be, well
The monthly bill is detailed, they break it out by
Case or account or issue.
Concom expense, CPC expense, blah, blah, you know, affordable housing expense
So, could we get that once, could we get that once a month?
Absolutely.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Could it at least be a line item in the budget someplace?
Well, it is a line item in the budget.
This particular case?
Oh, this case?
So that people at Town Meeting in May know what's going on, that
Well, it sounds like it's probably going to, it might be a presentation
You're going to have a budget extra money to pay for this. Plus, you're still going to have to maintain that road to make it safe.
Well, we can, we can, we can track the expenses related to this. It's difficult to make it a separate line item, because you're talking about, if we're just talking about legal expenses, that's easy. If we're talking about, if there are other expenses that are being, that are going to be incurred, that are above and beyond the original cost, that are related to this, it's, I can't take, I can't take expenses from different departments and make them one line item.
No, but you can asterisk saying it went from 100 to 200 next year because of this case.
Yeah, you can, but there are other cases that, I mean, that we would, I think I would categorize as being unreasonable cases. I think you would do the same, Jack. You know, I mean, it's not unusual for us to have situations where they defy logic, so to speak. I mean, this isn't
I'm done.
And I wouldn't want to, I would not want to single that out. I mean, it is what it is, and
We'll keep track of it, don't worry. While Scott is here, Scott Bragman is our HR director, and resident curmudgeon, I think, based on tonight.
I got a cold, I'm just, no, grouchy.
No, Scott, I'm kidding, obviously. Scott is, you all know Scott, Scott's done a great job in the two to almost three years now that you've been here, with many different things, but one of the things that we're working on, Scott is working on now, is trying to hire a new chief assessor. As you all remember, John Neese left, is now working in Hopkinton. So, Scott's got two or three, maybe four, somewhere in that ballpark, strong applicants. So, we're going to start interviewing people this Thursday, at least one of them is set up, so we're making progress on that. We've got a couple of good assistant, assistant assessors from other towns that are interested, so that's good. I would really like to get somebody, we've got some appraisers, we tend to get assistant assessors and appraisers who are interested in working for towns. So, we've got some appraisers that are interested, that's what John was, and that worked, that worked out fine for us, but it's a revaluer, we really would like to get somebody who's been working in the municipality, knows the assessing side of the business rather than the appraising side of the business, because a good chunk of their DOR, the Department of Revenue reports, and the work that's setting the tax rate that gets done is obviously something that an appraiser would not be, appraisers are, they're 100% focused on value of a home, an assessor has that plus a whole lot more. So, I'm really hoping to get somebody with some municipal experience.
Are you, with your impending retirements, are you thinking in this hire is part of any sort of restructuring that you're considering?
It's certainly, that is certainly a possibility. It's if we, so what you're, what you're getting at, and I'll just, I'll give the rest of the people a little bit more background, so we have the ability to have a finance director in the town, our bylaws say we should have a finance director. And the finance director is, is either the chief assessor, the town accountant, or the treasurer. For the past couple of years, three or four, seems like forever, years now, we've only, we've had a town accountant, a chief assessor, and a treasurer, but none of those three people have been, also had to carry the title of finance director. If we had that back when I was the finance director, I had the title of town accountant and finance director, so that meant I oversaw the treasurer and the assessors departments as well. So, Jim's question is very good, and something Scott and I are keeping in the back of our mind, if we get a strong candidate who we think we would probably exceed the range of what we would pay our assessor, a strong candidate who we would, we would be able to hire for a slightly higher rate, who could also oversee the accounting and treasurer's departments, we certainly would hire that person as the chief assessor and finance director. So, yeah, yes, we are thinking about that.
That would pretty much eliminate your appraisers.
Yeah, and we do have, we do have a, our town accountant is going to retire next December or January, I can't remember which, but next winter, and we have our assistant town accountant is going to be retiring slightly before that, so two very valuable employees, Julie Shevko and Mary Norris, who taught me a lot when I joined the company, joined the town as a town accountant, so they will be greatly missed when their time comes to retire, but it's well-deserved, so we look forward to that for them.
She will be, she's been terrific.
Yeah, both
Both missed.
No, nothing gets through them without some questions.
Now, it's less than a year away, it's vital to get someone on board just to overlap with those two, I mean
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to start advertising the town accountant's position pretty soon, trying to get somebody in to start potentially as early as July or September.
You said town accountant, you mean finance director.
What's that?
No, town accountant.
Town accountant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We need to hire, yeah, I mean, that's why we were, we were budgeting the finance department a little higher for next year, because we know there's going to be some overlap when, because we're going to try and hire somebody before Julie leaves.
You know, sometimes unexpected events turn out to be good events.
Yeah.
So, gives you a chance to kind of redo some things.
Yeah.
But I think the snow was good for us, too. I think it appears like people were sitting at home and looking for jobs online.
You can have mine to throw at them, too.
Yeah, I have a good reason for the snow, I miss that.
You didn't lose power, so, yeah.
I think it helped us, because people were sitting home looking for jobs, and we've got a bunch of resumes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, well, maybe we can offset that with some of the additional plow costs we've incurred in the last 28 hours. I don't think those numbers are going to work.
Can you go back, sit over here?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, Scott.
Well, good luck with that.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. I'm going to need a lot of help.
That'd be great if you can find that right person.
Scott and I did meet with, we met with the board of assessors, so we're going to, you know, our bylaws are, in hiring a chief assessor are nicely convoluted, I have to get, that process, we'll go through the board of selectmen, but also, I need to work with the board of assessors, which I'm happy to do, but it's, it's one of the more convoluted processes for hiring a person, so I need to get both boards on board before we hire somebody, so I look forward to the very public, very efficient process. But Scott will help us, right, Scott?
I have nothing to say.
Three strikes.
You're going to do really well in the executive session, aren't you?
We did open the warrant earlier in the night, and we talked about a couple of articles, including changing the zoning enforcement from the commissioner over to the planner, a placeholder for the moderator for three-year term, but you've got the rest of the, what Marion and I refer to as the boilerplate articles there, that will be there, and we encourage people to get their warrant articles in, as that solid deadline is
February
February 19. So, you can work right over Valentine's Day to get those articles in.
Don't wait, don't delay. Earlier is better, the, earlier
Earlier is better. So, that's all I think I have, other than your acceptance of minutes, and
Did you read the minutes?
All's open, all's under questions.
I did, are they listed here?
Yes.
Yeah, they're listed here. Okay, so, make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of December 18th, 2014, that's regular and executive session, the meeting of December 29th, 2014, regular and executive session, and the meeting of January 6th, 2015, regular session only.
Second. Any questions? No, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, accepted.
Can I ask a scheduling, just, I want to make sure, we have a meeting scheduled for March 24th, is that, the only potential conflict I have with that is, I was invited to speak at the Lions meeting, which they don't mind having me come at a later meeting, but before I said no to March 24th, I just wanted to make sure none of you had a conflict with March 24th, that
I didn't bring my calendar.
Oh, Jim. So, she just threw that out there, just a little piece there.
Yes.
Okay, because that's the fourth Tuesday, so that's, so it isn't, it's fine, I just, I'm
I mean, you want to move it to Wednesday, or, sure, Wednesday's fine, too.
Wednesday's fine for me, it's up to you.
Is he's fine with me? I'm sure
You're trying to get out of the meeting, Jack, I'm not sure your angle is
I got to go sometime, so, no, I'm looking forward to it.
I mean, I'm, you know, the Lions are Wednesday.
Want to move, I mean, it's okay by me.
Yes.
Wednesday, March 25th?
Yes.
Okay, good for you, Jeff?
Yeah. All right, so we will meet on March 25th, and if they'll still take me, I'll go to the Lions on the 24th.
Probably, just maybe a brief update on the meeting you and I attended, Jack, in Boston?
Yeah, I was hoping you would do it.
We went into the Mass Municipal Association meeting, and I, really, I, only two things I think really are major highlights of it, you know, our new governor spoke, and there were two things that I think are worthy of repeating, although I think most of it was on the news, but number one is, he did release the additional Chapter 90 money to all the cities and towns, a commitment he made during the campaign, and a commitment he lived up to when he was first in office, so that was good news, so that's more money for us. The other comment that he made that at least resounded with me was, and this I don't think comes as a surprise to anyone, is that he has, now that he's in office and has had a chance to look at the books, the welfare of the budget is not as rosy as he anticipated it to be, and I don't think that took any of us by surprise. What was, what I was pleased to hear is that he made a commitment that he viewed that deficit as an issue to the state, and not an issue to the towns and municipalities, and he made the commitment that we would not bear the burden of that deficit, and that he would not cut state aid to the local towns and municipalities. So, just, this isn't, this isn't a political statement on my part, there's nothing to do with that, it's about money. And, you know, usually, the history has been, over the last seven years or so, that when these deficits have occurred, to the extent that apparently it is now the case, we have paid the price for that. I mean, we're still, I think, a little below where we were in 2008, aren't we, Jack?
Yeah, I don't think we're at 2006 levels yet.
Yeah, so, you know, we're still behind eight years ago in terms of state aid, and we kind of anticipated that we were going to get hit again, and so that was exceptionally good news. Other than that, it was a good meeting, but those are the two things that I wanted to share, because they're the ones that are, you know, impact our budgets.
It was a good meeting.
Anything else before we go into executive session?
You.
You're on a roll, you sure?
I forgot the exact wording Jeff told me, but I think as chair, I determined that, what is that, Jeff gave us the, what's the right phrase?
Bottom of the agenda.
Yeah, but that's not what it is, okay. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation presented by the party, and the chair so declares so.
You so declare.
I so declare.
I move to go into executive session.
Jeff Palumbo, aye.
Scott Bogby, aye.
Jim Leehead, aye.
Can we get a second?